Thank you. Mayor Carr?
Here.
Mayor Protem Labar?
Here.
Councilmember Alfieri?
Here.
Councilmember Case?
Can't hear you, Kelly.
Well, I can see she's here, so we'll let her work on her sound. Councilmember Neal?
Here.
Councilmember Path?
Here.
Councilmember Zuluaga?
I am present.
Thank you.
Thank you. If everybody would join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. America, we love you.
Thank you. We're on item three, and I'd like to ask council, first thing is, I sent out an email regarding the January 7th meeting that I would like to continue to January 21. In other words, cancel the 7th of January meeting. If I can go around the room and ask each of you if that's okay or not, or if you'd like to have any discussion, please do. Mayor Protem Labar?
It's fine with me, thanks.
Thanks. Councilmember Alfieri?
Yes, fine with me.
Councilmember Case? It's okay with her. I read her lips, yes.
No new taxes.
Councilmember Neal?
It's fine with me.
Councilmember Path?
I'd prefer to meet on the 7th. No, I'm kidding. It's fine with me.
I'm good with it. Thanks, Mayor.
All right. With that in mind, Suzanne will redo the dates on ordinances on 7, if they pass, and we will change those dates from January 7th to January 21. Once we get down there, it'll be for Sally Riley's attention. All right, thank you, council. The next thing on our list is council discussion on realigning and reappointment of council liaison assignments. And I'm suggesting that each person on the council have at least one active liaison role. With that in regard, I would suggest that I would give up my Historic Preservation Committee seat to Councilmember Path, and if we've got another situation where we can put Councilmember Alfieri, possibly on, I don't know, keep Willam Park beautiful, or do a swap around on some things that, I'll open it up for discussion. Anybody want to pitch in here?
Well, I'm happy to surrender one of my, I have two actives, which are quite active. I'd be happy to surrender Main Street if somebody would be interested in plugging into Main Street.
Okay. Any other thoughts? So, the situation with the Historic Preservation Committee is it meets in the afternoon as Suzanne's list, I'm sorry, the city clerk's list was put out today. And that will be a problem for anybody with a nine-to-five job, or nine-to-six, whatever it turns out to be. So, we kind of don't have a slot for Councilmember Alfieri with some obvious situation. I don't know if, Councilmember Neal, if you'd be willing to swap to be on Main Street as opposed to keep Willam Park beautiful, I don't have a better suggestion. Anybody else got an idea?
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry for this delay.
It's fine. Well, so, I don't know if we, Councilmember Neal, did you hear what I happened to say, or you have any opinion on that?
Yeah, I'm not really interested in swapping over to Main Street. I think Main Street being underfunded, so it's just going to be a problematic situation that I would like somebody else to report back on how they're doing.
Maybe Mr. Zuluaga keeps Main Street, and one of us, I mean, there's DDA, there's, I'm very happy on Parks and Rec where I'm at. I don't know.
Well, let's put it this way. I'll give up HPC and give that to Mr. Path. In the meantime, if we can work out on the side anything else, let's do that off the agenda, if you will.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes. Councilmember Ralph here.
Thank you. Even if we can't find an official liaison position for me, I'm okay with that. Keep Willam Park Beautiful is one of those. I want to make sure I'm committing to something that I can regularly attend. So even if my active role in Keep Willam Park Beautiful is not as the liaison, I would certainly have interest in attending their meetings just to be informed and be able to be active in the committee without being an official liaison.
Okay, that sounds like a pretty good solution. If everybody's okay with all that, we can move on. Mr. Path, I think you have the schedule in front of you about Historic Preservation Committee. Is that something you're willing to do?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, thank you. All right, very good. We'll move on to agenda item four, additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda. I've been informed by two council members that they'd like to move off the two contracts under the consent calendar for discussion right after the consent calendar. The only other change I would mention is when we get to seven, the January 7th now needs to be, say, January 21st. Any other additions, deletions, or corrections, council?
Just clarification, are you trying to move both 5B and 5C off of the consent, or just one of them?
Both of them have indicated, I have indication that there's questions. Both of them have questions to be answered, and so just to move them off right after the consent calendar. With that in mind, hearing no other suggestions, we'll proceed to the consent calendar, which now has only one item because the minutes were, the dog ate them, and so we will just approve the expenditures for November 2020.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, do we not need to vote on the moving of those things off the consent calendar?
We can.
If I could, Your Mayor, Your Honor, the way procedurally it works, if there's any item in the consent calendar that, as it states in the agenda, if discussion is deemed necessary, that item should be removed. I think by operation of the consent calendar requirements, that everybody already be in agreement that it can all be passed in a single vote, it would necessitate moving it regardless. So I don't know if a vote is needed to move it off.
Yeah, the standard procedure that we've got listed in our public statement says exactly what you said, so I believe you're, we'll stick with that for now, pending further discussion later, I guess.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion on the consent calendar, please?
I'm going to approve the consent calendar as presented.
A second?
You want to second it?
Mr. Neal, second it. Now, there's one item, and just to be clear, we have one item on the consent calendar, which is the November 2020 Statement of Expenditures. Suzanne?
Alfieri?
Yeah.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Path?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
The next item is to approve the construction contract with Kimley Horn Associates in the amount of $83,000, as presented, providing the mayor to sign the contract, Public Works Director to prepare the notice of award, and to negotiate approved change orders up to the amount not to exceed 10% of the contract price. This is the Kelly Road, or Kelly's Road, design contract. If we have questions from council, please direct them to, I don't see, is Robin? Yes, Robin's here. Thank you.
Are you asking for hand raised?
Yes, you had a question?
Yeah, Robin, I see that this is one contract. Are we sending these out for a bid? Are we posting them in the newspaper? Are we posting it online? What's our procedure for securing a bid from a vendor, and how many vendors respond, or did respond to this?
So for these two contracts, for the Kelly's Road and Baldwin, and also the Highway 67 contracts, we reached out to two of our on-call engineering firms, Kimley Horn and then Wilson and Company. They both responded with proposals, and in both cases, the Kimley Horn proposal was most thorough and most cost-effective.
So we are not posting these out for competitors to bid on? Is that what I'm understanding?
These were not posted for a traditional bid, mainly because we already had the two engineers as on-call engineers, and we were hopeful that we could, that these contracts would be able to be included in the approved on-call engineering costs that we had already budgeted for. They are a bit more than what we were expecting.
And if I could interject, Councilmembers Zuluaga, in order to become an on-call contractor, that was bidded previously. So we put it out to bid for on-call services. That was a public bid opening process. And then once those contractors are on our on-call list, then we shortlist it from there for these types of projects, and that helps expedite the process.
Well, I appreciate it expedites the process, but it concerns me that we don't have competitive bids, and generally in construction, you get three bids, and then you have that to assess. So can we perhaps look at that in future, that we open this up through public notice on contracts of this size?
Can I jump in too, Mayor?
Yes, and then after that, Rusty, I'm sorry, Councilmember Neal has his hand up.
I can hold off until Councilmember Neal.
Go ahead, Kip, you started.
As far to elaborate on Jason's comments and Robin's, we did have a competitive bid process we had for the on-call engineer. I believe we had eight engineering firms submit proposals to us. We reviewed all those proposals. We went based off qualifications and price, or when I say price, their price they gave us for their services, and we came down to four on-call engineers. And then, as Robin said, we reached out to those, two of those four for this specific project because we've had good luck with both of those engineers and good pricing in the past.
So when did you, Kip, sorry for continuing to ask, unless you would need to go first, Rusty, I can come back later.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So, the, I'm encouraged by the fact that you sent it out to eight engineers. Now, was this something you did this year? Is this something you did at the start of a process, and now you have a shortlist?
So we did the on-call request about, it was a little, I wouldn't want to say it was between 18 and 20 months ago, so a year and a half ago, potentially, is when we put that out for, or that proposal for request, and it could be 22 months. I'd have to double-check on that. I know their contracts have expired because they're just one-year contracts, and we are renewing those because we typically do it on a three-to-five-year cycle for on-call engineers, but it was recent. We had to do that to meet CDOT requirements when we bid out the Safe Routes to School project, so we just redid everything at that time.
Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Neal?
Well, I want to follow up a little bit more on that. When you say it was one year that's been expired, which is expired? The solicitation to be on the shortlist is, what was the term of that shortlist? What I don't want to do is open the city up to exposure. If we had a competitive bid, and we have compiled a list of preferential vendors, is what it's normally called, and then they're entitled to things like this, that's what their bid was for. Unless that RFP and award has expired, I would worry or wonder, are we subject to a violation to that, the terms and conditions of that competitive bid, by not awarding to somebody that's shortlisted?
So we did a one-year contract with all four of the selected on-call engineers to basically try them out. We typically in the past have done anywhere from three-to-five-year contracts. We didn't want to jump into a three-to-five-year contract in case things weren't working out. It was kind of like a trial run, if you will, and all the firms, when we interviewed them and went through the selected bid process, in the first place, we were anticipating doing longer contracts with, we just didn't.
Okay, so the original RFP, that, I mean, Robert's got a valid point. The original RFP to have contractors bid to get on a shortlist was a one-year contract? Am I understanding that correctly?
I don't know off the top of my head. I'd have to go back and look at the original request.
Well, I guess the question is, have the terms of that original RFP that would have preferential treatment to these shortlisted companies, has that duration expired? So that now you need to do another RFP to get another shortlist with a valid duration of that contract?
I'd have to turn to Jason and see what his expertise is on knowledge of that contract. And we typically sometimes renew contracts, so they don't necessarily expire, you just renew. But I don't know that one in particular.
Jason, do you need to go back and research this, so we know what the terms were on the original contract that qualified vendors?
We can certainly go back and look at those. I don't have those sitting here in front of me. If it was 18 months to two years ago, that would have been right before my time starting at the city, or right when I started. So I'm not, I don't know that I have that information off the top of my head. I would point out that we currently do not have in our ordinance a specified procurement policy. So from a legal perspective, there isn't anything necessarily that we're violating. It is on our to-do list. When Michael started, our interim city manager now, to get that process up to date and up to snuff with current standards. And so we are in the process of updating our, or suggesting updates to the code so that we do have a formalized bidding process and requirements, but currently we do not.
Yes, Michael and I discussed that today in our meeting today, so it's high on my priority as also. Sorry, Councilmember Neal.
Yeah, I would just, I would hope council would agree that we would want Jason to go back and check the terms of that competitive bid to be placed on the shortlist. They're not entitled to anything so that somebody could call foul, and then we might be exposed to some sort of a liability. That would be the first thing. The second thing is, time-wise, if we delay this, what does that do in terms of the projects? I mean, I don't mind going back and making sure we're not exposed, and believe me, I fully support that. But I also want to know what is a delay in awarding these contracts due to the projects?
So if we delay approval of the contracts, obviously that will delay design, which will then delay construction. We have spoken with Kimley Horn on design for both of these projects, and they're hopeful to be able to provide us with designs by the end of June 2021. However, once we get design, we still have to send the design out to bid for construction, and then we still have to get construction finished. So in a similar fashion to what happened, I think, with Evergreen Heights, if we delay this a whole lot longer, then we could get, push that into a late construction season, into late summer, early fall.
I think I saw Planning Director Riley's hand raised.
I also wanted to mention that CDOT will need to review the design for Highway 67, and they've been tracking about six to eight weeks in their review process.
Mayor Carr, follow-on question?
Yes, Councilmember Neal.
So would this delay, in your opinion, Sally, cause any additional costs?
Not so much cost. It's really the delay in getting to the construction point. And then there's the potential of losing the construction season next year, and then we're into construction in 2023, or 2022, 2023.
But we'd be still using the 2019 funds that were approved from last year's budget, correct?
Those are carried forward.
Okay.
Within the 410 fund.
Obviously, any delay, we have inflation jeopardy and rebid jeopardy as far as expanding that budget, obviously.
Yeah. Mayor, it's really hard to hear you. Are you able to increase your volume at all?
My speaker's right there. I don't know. I can't tell how loud or quiet I am.
Robert, I think it's at your end because the mayor is very loud at my end.
Oh, good. You must have similar technology. Of course, you've got a headset on.
I went to a headset, that's why.
Yeah, that's why, yeah, yeah.
Director Wiley?
I'd just like to add to, as far as timing, Kelly's and Rampart and Baldwin are pretty time-sensitive due to the school session. I would assume the kids will be back in school. So if those get delayed a little bit, we'll probably delay the project just because of traffic in the school areas because those are our two major roads, or the two roads that our schools are on. So that might throw a little hiccup in there, and then if they do carry on to where a contractor mobs and then has to pull off the job due to conditions, there's always another additional demo cost.
So I'm reluctant to, it sounds like we've got enough question here to make a pass at this. I wish we'd thought of this a week ago, but we haven't. So a week from now is Christmas, probably not a really good time to be thinking about having a special meeting. But we could, I'm kind of throwing it out to council, what do you want to do here? Do you want to do this research, as a couple people have mentioned, and then have a very, very quick special meeting next week somehow? Councilmember Case, you've got your hand up.
Yeah, I just would like to ask Kip and Robin, and Sally, if you will. When we put out bids for these kinds of things, how is our typical response rate? How, I mean, meaning typically, how many bids do we receive? Do we sometimes receive one? Do we sometimes receive two? I hear that the last time that we did the bid for this on-call contract, it was, we had eight, and we selected four, correct?
Yeah, we might have had a little bit more than eight. I know we interviewed eight, and then we selected, of those interviewed, we selected four for the on-call. The, when we do on-call services, it's a little different than construction services. Construction services, we haven't had the best of luck.
I am. And with that, is there, in the agreement with those on-call folks, is there a provision in the agreement that allows for the agreement to be extended at the city's discretion?
If I could speak to that, I've had a moment now to pull up the contract. I believe this is the one we're looking at. It was passed and signed July of 2019. And under this section where it discusses the term of the contract was set to expire December 31, 2019. However, the city shall have the option to renew the contract for subsequent one-year terms for up to four one-year terms. Renewals would commence on or about January 1 of subsequent years. And they have until September 30 of the prior year to provide any proposed price adjustments, and the city reserves the right to reject any price adjustments submitted and/or terminate the contract with the consultant based on those price adjustments. And it's within the sole discretion of the city of whether or not we continue in the contract. So that might answer some of the questions that came up earlier as to whether or not, to Councilmember Neal's point, whether we were beholden to those, these contractors, to utilize them. I do not believe we are. That initial term has expired, but it's our option to keep forward if we choose, and it's within our sole discretion to do so.
And if I may, Mayor, just to continue my points. With that in mind, and considering, these are not construction contracts, these are design contracts, and when we go to construction, we'll have the opportunity to bid those out and quest bids for those construction projects, which will be when the large sums of money will be on the table and contracted for expenditure. So in the interest of all these things that were discussed that delay might cause, and remembering that we have such a short construction season in this town, I'm of the opinion that those contracts be considered to be extended, and let's move forward because we've already canceled the January 7th meeting. If we need a meeting to reconsider these, then we need that meeting to do that. Knowing that we have the opportunity to bid the construction and the material portion of the project, my suggestion is that we move forward with these, and then we have the opportunity to address the construction when it comes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I concur with Councilmember Case's opinion there. I'm going to ask a simple question to Robin, Kip, and Sally. I beg your pardon for using your first names. Are any of you aware that you've canceled those, as far as you know? In other words, they're continuing on as far as you know, all right? And Jason sounds like he hasn't done that either, so I would concur with Councilmember Case and ask for a motion to, is there further discussion on this contract, on the first one, which is Councilmember Zuluaga?
Yeah, just one final thing, and that is, Robin, I heard you say that the price on this contract was more than you expected. So my question now goes to you, Jason. If they had, if they have till the 30th of September of the prior year to give you price adjustments, did you receive price adjustments from this vendor prior to the 30th of, I'm going to say 2019, 20, yeah, 2019?
I think the distinction is, and Robin, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe that their rates have changed, which is what we would request them to provide us that notice of, but perhaps the amount of hours that this requires was more than we anticipated. So I don't believe that they changed their rates, but when you do- But when you do an on-call situation like this, we would ask for what their hourly billable rates are for a variety of different services, GIS, technical assistance, et cetera. And when we come up with a project, we then send it to them knowing what the rates are and they, we can anticipate what the, the price will be at that point. In this case, I think the amount of design was higher than anticipated. Not because their hourly rate changed, but because of the scope of the project may have been more intense than we originally thought. But I would have to defer to Robin in that regard. I don't believe that their rates have changed since July of 2019.
Jason, I would agree with that. I, I don't believe their rates have changed also.
Councilmember Neil, have we answered your question appropriately?
Yeah, in fact, I've heard enough that I'm kind of in the same camp as Councilwoman Case, that we should go ahead and move forward on awarding them, perhaps making a vote whether we want to award, if not both of them, but at least the $83,000 at least, so that we don't hold up the schools. And I, I personally would like to see both of them moving forward so that we have, you know, improvements being made. The funds have already been set aside. Let's, let's spend them and get it done.
Thank you. We, we've separated out individually. So without any further discussion, I don't see any other hands raised. I would look, ask for a motion on the single 5B, which is the $83,000 piece.
I'll move to approve.
Thank you. Councilmember Case, second?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Neil, second. Suzanne?
R?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
LeBarre?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Zulwaga?
Yes.
Alfieri?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to 5C, which is to approve the construction contract with Kim Lee Horn and Associates in the amount of $152,500 as presented, providing for authorization for a mayor to sign contract, et cetera, et cetera. Discussion, please.
Well, I guess.
Neil?
Go ahead, go ahead, Rusty. You can start.
Mine was a very simple one. It's to Jason. There's no difference between the information we just received about 5B and 5C, correct?
Correct. It would apply the same.
Thank you. That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Councilmembers?
So I, I have a concern about this contract on a lot of levels. And I did reach out to the mayor earlier this week. And so he suggested I get together with a meeting with Kip and Sally and Robin. But before I came on council, there was a lot of jostling for priorities to move this project up to the front of the line in some of the roadworks. And I'm concerned on its foundation, even before spending this sort of money on, on design, that we were told, the community was told that if we don't do this road improvement, that they're going to take concrete barriers and put them along the highway. And our police department won't be able to get out of their police exit onto the highway and all sorts of issues. Claiming that we had agreed to a contract 25 years ago to make improvements at this Research Drive intersection and that section of the road going up towards the police station and the school. So it was presented on false terms. It was presented as we absolutely have to do this. And I'm concerned about the priority of this project in the context of the improvements on 67 from Evergreen Heights all the way to the curve past the pass the golf course. So to my mind, seeing we're working with the engineer up to Kelly Road and the new light structure at Kelly Road, seems to me we've already, and I, I do need to sit down with, with Sally and Kip on this, and well, now you, Robin. But I understand Phase 1 has already been designed, planned, engineered. And that's the part from Evergreen Heights through to Kelly Road. I understand that we also have funding through PPACG in, in portion for that. And I'm concerned that we're going to spend engineering costs of 150,250 on a partial solution to a much bigger picture that I think it's wise for us to have that full picture before we're starting to allocate funds. So I'm, I'm just structurally opposed to even considering this contract at this point without a lot more discussion and further overview of this, of what's it really look like for the good of the development of that whole north part of Woodland Park over the course of the next 10 years? Is that really, is this really just a emergency stopgap, hurry up and let's fix it because somebody said so through fear? Or have we really looked at this with a methodical eye?
Would any of the staff, Councilmember Neil?
Well, I just want to provide testimony since I make those turns every single day because it goes into my housing area. I, I'm fully looking forward to the expansion of that intersection, at least at Research Drive and having turned into the post office many times, I, I see the value of having that widened so that we do have the extra turn lane and we don't have people bottled up and slamming on their brakes at those two intersections. Because right now, it is a two-lane road where you make a left turn off of, if you're northbound on 67 into the housing area. There's a lot of people that come up way too fast because it's two-lane. So I would like to see, and this is just me speaking as a citizen right now. I think it's wise to have the turn lane at least constructed so that we have the ability, people to keep the flow of traffic going. And those that need to make the turn can go ahead and pull over and, and get out of the way. Robert, I was trying to address your concern about that, that intersection. I use it every day.
Well, the question for me is what sort of traffic studies, what sort of analysis done? I understand that there's a lot of, of subjective input into it. But in terms of a systematic analysis of it, and have we really, I mean, here we are spending city money on a, on a state road. Have we, that also has direct involvement from the county on the, I'm going to say going north on the right side, so on the east side of the road. And these, there's a whole bunch of partners involved in this, and we have acted on fear. Oh no, they're going to shut us down. So we're paying out of the citizens' dollar on the state highway. I just, I just have some problems with how we've moved forward on this.
I'm going to ask that the staff, yes, Director Riley, if you'd like to pitch in here.
Thank you, Mayor. If I can provide some historical background on this issue. It began in 1995, 25 years ago, when the city signed an access agreement with CDOT for Tamarack Parkway. And that agreement specifically said that the city shall make necessary improvements when they are warranted. And those warrants or requirements for the improvements actually were established four, four years later in 1999, when the city built the Police Operations Center and the U.S. Postal Service came in. So that was the trigger 20 years ago. We are now in arrears in fulfilling that obligation by 20 years. So when the new development began to occur recently at the end of Tamarack Parkway, the staff was unaware of the obligation that the city made with CDOT for the access permit to Tamarack Parkway. And as a result, we could not require the developer to do anything more than pay transportation capital fees toward the, these improvements into the city coffers. However, the developer of Tamarack Village at Tamarack has contributed an additional $68,000 to the improvements through a negotiation process. And that is all spelled out in Resolution 850, which was passed by council a year ago, November in 2019. There were traffic studies done, many traffic studies over the years. And CDOT has with this new project said to the city, if we do not fulfill the city's obligation in creating a left-turn lane at Tamarack Parkway and at Research because the traffic study warrants those improvements at both Research and Tamarack Parkway, then they have the right, CDOT has the right to be able to close off left-turn lane. I do have an email to that effect. I'd be happy to provide you with the full documentation. But this was all worked through a year ago with all the partners involved. And we have also contacted the county and they are going to work on their adjoining roads so that drainage and traffic is able to be compatible in this design. So that's the short answer.
If I could just piggyback onto that very briefly, we collected transportation impact fees from the United States government for the post office and the other properties that were developed over the last 25 years. And so that money has been in our coffers that was designated for these types of improvements that have never been done.
Thank you. And three of us were on council when we approved that resolution. And Councilmember Case?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say that I don't think that the council last year, or I would suggest even this council, is acting out of fear. I think we're acting out of an obligation, a contractual obligation that the city entered into. It was before our time, obviously. There'll be people come after us that are going to have to deal with obligations that this staff and this council obligates the city to. And that's, that's how, how it works. We have a contractual obligation. Unfortunately, we didn't take care of that obligation back when it was time to do that, because it certainly would have been a lot less expensive then, than it will be now. And it will continue to grow in cost as time goes by. Even the cost of replacing a deck these days has skyrocketed and it goes up every single day. So it's my opinion, and I'm just sharing, that it's time that we take care of our contractual obligation. That was done 25 years ago and became effective 21 years ago. So I just wanted to share those thoughts and I, for one, am ready to move forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for your inputs. Councilmember Alfieri, have your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. Interested in some clarification on the turn lane that is between Research Drive and Tamarack Parkway. So I understand that the turn lanes on the north and south are left-hand turn lanes that serve the streets that are city streets. But according to the, at least the way I can see it on the design here, that turn lane between Research and Parkway, is that serving both the east and westbound sides of Highway 67?
Yes, it will serve both.
So my concern there is that we are implementing a turn lane that serves both county property and city property. But is there no cost sharing of the county for that servicing their roads?
The county's roads weren't part of the access permits that triggered these improvements. And there is very little traffic going east onto Sunnywood Avenue or I think it's not.
Rappahoe Trail.
Not, yes. So the lion's share of the traffic is generated by city residents.
So do we have a recent traffic study to that effect as, as Councilmember Laguha had pointed out?
Yes.
Okay, how recent is that?
How recent?
Is it the, the traffic study from the, the village at Tamarack Parkway?
There was an initial traffic study by the village at Tamarack and CDOT wanted that updated and expanded. And the city did do that less than a year ago.
I think it was completed in May or June of this year, Sally?
That's right.
And do you know how much of that, again, was focused on the increase in traffic for the village at Tamarack? But in comparison to the original agreement from 1999, do we have any idea where, based on all the traffic congestion, how much of that is due to the city's west side of 67 and the county's east side of Highway 67?
I don't have the statistics memorized, but I'm going to guess that the city's traffic is anywhere between 80 and 90% of the traffic generated on Highway 67.
And if, if I could add, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sally, Kip or Robin, if, because I'm not, I haven't been following the details since last year with the updated traffic study. It's not really in my wheelhouse. But the, the agreement for 1995 and the requirements under that agreement that the city was required to undertake when we met those thresholds back in 1999 are actually far more burdensome than what CDOT is allowing us to do to solve the problem today. It's actually, this bi-directional turn lane is a step below what CDOT required of us 25 years ago. If we were to do exactly what that agreement stated in 1995, we would be looking at something probably twice as, as big act on our budget. So this is a compromise, as I recall.
Kip, Director Wiley, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment without getting too much into the design. When they put in that center turn lane to turn left onto Tamarack, it really doesn't change, from a design standpoint, that center lane has to go the full length in between Tamarack and Research because there's, there's not enough stacking distance. So whether someone's turning, if whether someone's going southbound and turning left onto a county road, that lane would still be there anyways, just from a design standpoint. So because of the limitations of the, the distances between those two roads.
Councilmembers?
So this is, question is for Kip, Sally and Robin. So do you have in your records a completed Phase 1 and Phase 2 program for the expansion to four lane on northbound 67? for the expansion to four lane on northbound 67?
So
Go ahead, Kip.
So going from Evergreen Heights to Kelly's, we did a design that has two northbound and two southbound lanes. That's the only portion we have done. CDOT is now mobilized and they're starting to do work at Kelly's and 67 for the signal light. That's a CDOT project. And then for this project, for the Tamarack project, it's, the intent is to do a Phase One and Phase Two because we don't want to make improvements to the highway that won't be usable for the second phase when that has to be completely built out.
So is this scope of work that we're considering here? What's the scope of that in terms of Phase Two? Is it doing a complete Phase Two study from Kelly Road to pass the golf course?
No, this, this contract that's right in front of you is just Tamarack to Research.
So we don't have a full picture. We're not really working with a full, a full vision of where this is and then saying, okay, this part of it we're doing here. We're
I disagree because there was some work done for, in front of the golf course for another project for a, a decel turn lane. But we're looking, so we've done studies or we've done the design from Evergreen Heights to Kelly's. In a perfect world, I would love to spend money on roads that aren't ours. I'm being very sarcastic.
Oh, oh, that's what we're doing now, right?
I, I just let you know, staff doesn't like it any more than you do. I would rather spend, me, Robin, Michael, Sally, everybody would rather spend our money on our own roads. Because this, this isn't, this isn't what we want to do. We want to, we would like to do other things, however. Due to past agreements and access permits that we weren't aware of at the time, we're just, we are satisfying our duties.
Is this the only project? Oh, yes, go ahead, Sally. Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to add the Phase One portion of the highway improvements. I was able to get into the Transportation Improvement Plan, that's called a TIP, for 2024. And I was able to get $1.6 million toward a $4 million project. So we have three years to try to obtain the balance of those funds through the PPACG and CDOT. But we have Phase One between County Road and Kelly's in the TIP, which is the first big step to getting that funded.
Good job, Sally. Thank you.
And we on PPACG are tuned into that. And our, our representative on PPACG is, is hot on the trail of those issues.
So Sally, one question, follow-up question on this is, aside from the Research Drive agreement, that's out of specs and has been out of specifications for quite a few years. Do we, does the city have any other out of specification highway projects that have not been attended to?
Boy, that's a really good question. I stay in very close contact with CDOT. Every month I have a access permit meeting with them. They have not brought these kinds of issues to me with those through that access permit group. But yeah, it's hard to say. We looked for an access permit for Research. But Valerie Sword could not find any research access permit. That was originally in a county road. So it's, it's really hard to say what is, what else is there. I want to be very honest with you. That I don't, I haven't been in the transportation world all 35 years of my time at the city.
Thank you. Well, I just have one final comment to make on this contract. I think it's a very expensive contract for the scope of work that it's proposing here. And so going back to our discussion on the last bid process, as it is not as timely in terms of our, our, our children and our school system. I would like to see us open this up to get three competitive bids on it that are more in, I mean, I'm uncomfortable with the price on this for the scope of work. I, if this was going to take from Kelly Road, I'll pass golf course and design that, I'd say this is a fair price. But for this amount, I think, for me, it's too expensive. So that's my last comment.
So I have no expertise in this. So Director Wiley has raised his hand. If you'd like to say some final thoughts, please.
Typically, we see engineering and design costs about 10% of a construction contract. This is a tad, a tad bit over that 10%, but I think it's because of the additional CDOT reviews and some other things they're doing because it is a state highway. It doesn't follow our normal city street where it's, engineering and design follows about 10%. I, I guess I'd just like to ask in your, when you base that, when you say that comment, you know, about going all the way to the golf course for design. I'm just kind of curious what, what leads you to that, that realization.
Well, it's more in keeping with my comments that I have and a, a resolution is already gone into place last year. So perhaps what I'm speaking is, is water under the bridge. But in terms of a design, if we're going to be spending money on a design, why wouldn't we do a Phase Two design on, on two lanes, north and two lanes, south from Kelly Road to pass the golf course? Seems to me like that is the growth of the northern corridor of our city. And to not design that in a strategic way and in a clear way, so we're not just patchworking one piece on top of another. That would give us some negotiation strength with both Teller County and CDOT. At least we have a plan and we're not just, you know, moving from, from one, one development to the next. Oh, oh, we better do something else. Oh, we got another development here. I mean, it seems to me we need to have a bit of a bigger vision on this.
So I will pitch in a little bit. We have a PMP and we've got some pretty, we do have some plans. And I've asked the, the staff to give us a work session early next year to discuss those things. So we're all kind of get up to speed on those things. And I'm, I'm looking forward to that. And they're not just doing these piecemeal. Director Wiley.
Mr. Mayor, could you, before you go, Kip, Mr. Mayor, could you define what that acronym is for the public and for me?
Oh, Pike's Peak Area Council of Governments, is that what?
A PMP?
A pavement management plan.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilmember Alfieri. I'll wait.
You mentioned that you expect design cost to be about 10% of construction cost with this one running a little high. So we're at about $50,000 for the design cost for this. Thinking back to the original discussion on this, if I remember correctly, we were expecting it to be about three quarters of a million dollars, 750,000. So are you saying that you expect it to be quite a bit above, if I remember correctly, the original numbers when this was first brought to council, based on the design cost?
Yeah, yes. Robin has the estimated construction cost. And Robin, you want to chime in real quick with that?
Sure. Yeah, so we have an engineer's estimate of construction costs that are approximately 1.2 million dollars. That was an estimate that was done, I believe, in 2019. So obviously, construction, construction costs go up every year. So that 1.2 could easily turn into 1.3 or 4 pretty quickly. I did want to give a little bit of more information to Councilmembers Zuluaga. The other proposal that we received had a base price of $125,000. That price did not include construction management services during construction. They didn't give an estimate in the proposal for Highway 67, but their estimated construction management services, the cost of those for the Kelly's and Baldwin project were between 200 and 300,000 dollars. The Kimley Horn contract did include construction management services. So just for a little comparison for you.
And then to, to add to Councilmember Zuluaga's comments about doing a further traffic study down to the golf course. I just don't want to spend money on a road that's not ours. I know it's not the best approach. But past that intersection, there's, there's two streets and I'd rather CDOT pick up that tab in the future. And we do our best to just design for what those intersections look like and what full buildout looks like at those intersections.
I agree with that, but I think that the whole idea of working in conjunction with CDOT and Teller County is, should be part of our whole ongoing process. And not just kind of throw our hands up in the air and go, oh, well, look, that's not ours. We're going to worry about it when you guys worry about it. I think, you know, strategically, our best proactive step is to, to engage in dialogue and discussion with both Teller County and CDOT.
Councilmember Case, you had your hand up.
Yeah, Mayor, I'm sure you'll agree with me that the process for construction on, on state highways is typically, those are funded through the, the PPACG organization and their different committees. Mr. Mayor, you're on, Sally's on there. And, and those come through with sharing costs. Typically, the state picks up the largest part, typically 80%, we'll say. Sometimes it's 83 if the Fed's involved, if it's a federal highway. And we are on the hook for the other part. And so, and that's design, that's construction, that's all of it. So when 67 is improved and widened and that drainage is done and all of that, then those kinds of things will occur. And we only are on the hook for the small portion of between 17 and 20% typically. So for us to put more money on the line than we would be obligated to do when that time comes, it's not our, it's not in our list of things to do, if you will. That's a, that's a discussion with PPACG, with the state and with all of that as that comes time. Mr. Mayor, would you agree with me?
I would. And, and, and planning in a sense of on paper is different than planning on, in the sense of expending massive funds. And I think, I think there's enough imagination in our public works and our planning department to understand those issues now that we're aware of, of past sins, let's call them. And, and I have confidence that the staff will keep their horizons and their, their budgetary acumen in mind at all times. I have that confidence. That's just my personal opinion.
I agree with you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Director Wiley.
And one last little, I guess, detail I just, just popped into my head. As far as moving further north past Tamarack, the city's fully built out in the reserve. Moving further to the north to the golf course, we're built out, the only development will occur at Lucky Lady Drive, which has already been built out for those highway interchanges as far as accesses. So there's very little development that's going to occur in between Tamarack and the golf course. I would say a couple of single-family homes here and there. Sally, correct me if I'm wrong because it'll have it all memorized. But there's very little development that's going to happen between those two that's within city limits. And it's won't be further until you get to the north side of town where there's been some improvements there already.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion at this point.
Just before you do, Mr. Mayor, I have one more comment.
Quickly, we've spent
So my last comment on this is that we are spending at this point 101.2 million plus engineering costs, of which we're going to get an offset of some from one of the developers. From what I heard Jason say, we're going to have some, there are some funds in the coffer already. I don't know what the total of those funds are. But when I'm, my point is, we are on the hook now because we didn't take the time to work with CDOT. And maybe I have it wrong, but with CDOT and Teller County. Can I finish my comments, please, ma'am? So my comments are that we have another huge project which is coming up, which is, which is not about this, but it's a whole idea of a reliever route. Some preliminary work that the mayor and I have looked at, and I don't want to speak out of turn or too soon. But they were waiting for, for Woodland Park to say, hey, we want a reliever route. And before the new council got on, a resolution was made to, that, that the city of Woodland Park wants a reliever route. That was a powerful piece of, of legislation or a resolution that's gone to the, to the CDOT and it's, it is starting to move their wheels. So in the same spirit of it, going up 67, if we can get some cohesive vision of where we're going with it and not just patchwork it, that is in our long-term interest to getting PPACG, getting state money into the process in a, in a timely way. So that's my last comment on this.
Councilmember Case. We have you on mute. You're, you're muted.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the contract as presented this evening.
I'll second it. Second from Councilmember Neil. Thank you. Suzanne.
Case?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Path?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
No.
Alfieri? Alfieri?
No.
Far?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five, two.
Thank you. We move on to public comment. I've got a roster here and so I'm going to give each person five minutes to speak. And first on the list is Carol Harvey. I believe this is her. Whoops. Somebody got to it before I did. I don't, I don't know where she is. Oh, there she is. Okay.
No comment.
Carol, are you ready to go? We're on item six, item's not on the agenda.
I think she just commented that she is not wanting to comment at this point.
I'm sorry, I missed that. I was probably overspoke. Next on our roster is Patricia Stinner. If you would come on and identify yourself in your municipality, you've got five minutes. I'm not sure if Rob's going to pull her in or I will try.
I just brought her in there.
Okay, thank you. You have five minutes, Ms. Stinner. First of all, identify yourself in your municipality and then unmute yourself, please.
Good evening, Mayor Carr. Can you hear me?
I can. Thank you very much. You've got five minutes.
Thank you. It, it won't take that. Good evening, Mayor Carr, council, city staff and viewers from home. My name is Patricia Stinner. I am a resident of the city of Woodland Park. I would like to thank Acting City Manager, Mr. Lawson, for defining a path forward to allow citizens to engage with council tonight through this Zoom platform. Couple of issues I have, but probably the one that is most, maybe most pertinent tonight going into the budget discussions. I find the voting records from recent city council meetings to be disturbing. When concerns of perceived conflicts of interest were brought to council's attention, statements were publicly made by city staff and councilmen declaring that recusal from a vote is to be a personal decision and is based only on criteria of financial interests. While that may be technically accurate, it is the voting, taxpaying public who determine whether perceptions of conflict of interest exist. Furthermore, conflicts of interest are not relevant only to financial interests. When there is a perception of conflict of interest and a councilman does not recuse oneself from voting, the public's trust in the entire vote is compromised. Several votes were recently taken by city council without consideration given to the public's perceptions of conflicts of interest. Without those councilmen's recusals, I question the integrity of council's final votes. Now, should voters ask council to repeal those votes? Or will the voters of the city of Woodland Park decide to initiate recalls on the basis of no confidence? Either scenario creates a significant inconvenience to the voters, to city council, and to the city administration. I'm respectfully asking for council to look to the guidance presented in the Woodland Park City Charter regarding perceived conflicts of interest. Per the city charter, I believe councilmen should recuse themselves when perceived or actual conflicts of interest are brought to council's attention. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, let's see, next on my list is uh Mr. Butterey, and we will try to bring him in. Mr. Butterey, if you could identify yourself in your municipality, I would appreciate that, and you will have five minutes. I don't, I, I think Rob has brought you in. I, I apologize to everybody. Running these through Zoom is very interesting, let's call it.
Hello, it's him, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Butterey, if you're out there, could you please raise your hand so I can find you easier?
I do not see him on our list at this point. All right, we'll move on. Um, seeing no other uh hands raised, we'll move on to uh unfinished business, uh item seven A, which is to approve the Logan Simpson Professional Services Contract to complete the twenty-twenty-one Comprehensive Plan Update and Land Use Code. Uh, Director Riley, would you like to present?
Thank you, Mayor Carr. Uh, ten days ago, Councilman Neil and Attorney Myers and I uh met to review the contract and uh Councilman Neil had uh included a few changes to the contract that I had provided in your packet uh with the red lines. Uh, the subs, the main focus was to uh make sure the language had a fixed price for the contract of a hundred thousand dollars in it. And then we also added a paragraph that allowed for a right to cure. If there were some disagreements, then um we would have an opportunity prior to termination of this contract to mediate or cure those issues. And I'll defer to um Councilman Neil if he wants to add anything to the contract. And then the scope of services has been also tweaked per uh direction from the mayor, wanting to ensure that council members are explicitly engaged in every aspect of the various tasks. So I recently sent out a redlined copy that explicitly included council uh in the tasks. And I would add that uh we will add uh council members to that language uh in order that it isn't uh misinterpreted that the council has to meet in order to uh make decisions as a body. In other words, it's the individual council members that will be participating from beginning to end of this very important and very exciting uh planning process. That's all I have.
Thank you. I will mention that what's in our published packet uh that we got uh last week has been updated, uh the redline versions of the, and thank you, Councilmember Neil, for helping us out with the contract language. Uh, as always, uh, the scope that's shown in the, in the original packet is, has, as uh Director Riley mentioned, has been changed. Uh, we all got a copy of that a few days ago. And so uh that's the uh, that's the scope and the contract that we're looking at. So the contract language is fine. It's the uh scope that I want to mention that uh further changes were made a few days ago. And a council, all of council has, has had those. They're minor, but they're, I just wanted to make sure that we understood that's two different things. Also, questions, discussion?
Mayor Carr.
Yes, Councilmember Neil.
I just wanted to highlight what I was concentrating on for council to understand. The way the contract had been written, uh, it was kind of a rate-based, but not to exceed, which puts risk on the city, um, because it did not guarantee the delivery of, of all of the deliverables for a, a certain amount of money. Uh, so the language that I worked on was to ensure it was a, a, what's called a firm fixed price. And we would get all of the deliverables that were listed for that dollar amount and that any additional work that um we wanted to add to it, instead of the um planning director um having the language in the contract to increase the amounts, it would be the city council that had to. I was trying to bring the council um a, a little bit um to the forefront. And then Mayor Carr, I saw your comments, which um I thought were great. Um, when I read them, I, I went back to Sally. She shared them with me. I thought it was good that, that where you had added the council. And you talked about um it not being a body, because that could slow down the process, but ensures that we individuals, the council members are identified explicitly at many points in the process, matter of fact, at every point in the process. So it was kind of a collaborative. Sally was sharing what the mayor was doing, and I think uh she was sharing with the, the mayor, what I, what language I had provided. So I think it was a good tag team effort. That's all I had.
I do appreciate your efforts. Thank you. Um, anybody else on council, any more uh discussion? All right, um, I will open it up to public comments.
Mayor, I'm trying to unmute myself and say.
Oh. No public comment yet.
So, uh Rusty, the uh version of this that I have, I've, I don't see tho, I don't see those changes made or reflected. Uh, I, I made some notes myself on what I saw in there. Um, so are your notes, the, the copy I have has like red parts in it. It has some, some yellow highlights. Can you tell me with, from the, from the contract that I have, the comprehensive scope of work that I have, what are the changes and modifications? Do you have a note marked up copy that has those?
Actually, Jason Meyer.
Packet, frankly.
Yeah, I'm scrolling through to see if
It's in tonight's packet?
That's what I'm scrolling through, uh, Robert.
Age fifty-eight of the packet.
Jason was actually described and was updating the language as we um went through the, the document. So let me take a look at.
Yeah, I, I just don't see any markups. That's all.
I'm just going to go to the, the main paragraph that I was focusing on and, and make sure that the language uh we had worked on is there.
Are you on a contractor, the scope?
I am actually going to the, uh, let's see. I am looking at the Comprehensive Plan Code Review Consulting Con, this is the actual contract where in paragraph three, this is a firm fixed price contract and the amount um one hundred thousand dollars. And then any uh, anything that uh goes beyond that, it has to be approved uh in writing by the city council. Do you see that in paragraph three?
What page in the packet is it?
Go ahead.
It's page one of the contract.
No, no, no. Our packet is a hundred and five pages.
Yeah, it's fifty-eight of one oh five, fifty-eight of one oh five.
Mayor, I can share that, uh, that screen with the council if you want.
Oh, I guess I could do. I forgot about that. Yes. Please go, please do. Thank you.
Everybody see that?
And it's paragraph three, Robert, where most of the language, and then paragraph four, you'll see the approval of the city council added a second time. Previously, it had the planning director or language around the planning director had the authority to um increase the amounts, and that was changed to the city council.
Okay, I see that now. Thank you.
My point was that the packet includes the uh, uh Councilmember Neil's contract changes. However, if you scroll down to the scope of work, that is not the one that was published a few days ago and has been modified. So with the understanding of council that we have two different things, this being the c, contract part and the scope of work being the other published uh part, I want to make sure we're discussed, we're all on the same page on what we're discussing. Thank you. Uh, any other comments uh from uh council? Before we go to public comment. Seeing no hands raised, I will open it up to public comment. We have no published public comment. I don't see anybody raising their hands, so I will close public comment. And um any final questions or, or thoughts? Uh, I'll, I'll go around the room. Mayor Protem Labar.
No, I don't have any uh questions. I appreciate the work that Councilmember Neil um put forward with um our director Sally Riley, and uh I appreciate the uh additional language and uh, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Alfieri.
Thank you. Um, I have no questions. My only comment would, yep, I see you. You're hearing better. My only comments would be um traditionally, I find comprehensive plans to be uh overreaching. And uh while outside the, the scope of, of general services for government to provide. Um, so I do have a hard time when the scope exceeds simply maintaining or improving the basic infrastructure within the city and vital services uh to justify spending such a large amount of money on a comprehensive plan that, that in my opinion, far exceeds the uh responsibilities of local government. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Case, any uh final deliberations or discussions or thoughts you have?
I have nothing other than to thank uh Rusty and Sally for their work on this contract. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I concur. Uh, Councilmember Neil?
Well, now I'll thank you, because I know you did some, a bunch of work on the statement of work. I was focusing more on the contract, but nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Path?
The money we spend on these things sometimes seems to percolate. As I went through uh the previous uh comprehensive plan, there were many, many areas that we never followed or even considered. So, you know, it's uh, it's good to have a guide way to try to figure out what to do, but um, you know, what's just seems like a superfluous bit of money for something that we don't end up ever following anyway. And if, and in some cases, if we did follow, uh, it would not be much to my liking and might provide a political purpose to encourage future councils to do things they might not otherwise do on principle.
Thank you. Councilmember Zuluaga.
Well, notwithstanding the effort you've put into it, Rusty, and uh Sally Riley's put into this, um, I too am fundamentally opposed to spending this much money uh on a project which uh Councilwoman Alfieri put pretty well. Um, it's beyond the infrastructure and the vital services that our city provides. And the bigger danger for me is that we're getting matching funds. Matching funds always come with conditions. And we might say, oh, no, no big deal, you know, they're, they're a foot in the bill because they want us to have a comprehensive plan. Well, once you start going down that road, you start letting go of your home rule and start allowing other entities to have a say of what's required. And uh, I feel this can be handled much more cost-effectively. We can say, thank you very much for your offer for a grant, but no thanks. And we could handle this in-house. We've got some new uh software that I don't know if now's a good time to talk about it, but uh the city clerk has, working on something that I think we got through COVID, COVID funds. What is it? Bang, bang the gavel or bang the table or?
That's, that's city manager is working on that.
Oh, he's working on it. Oh, all right. Well, anyway, so we have some stuff that's in place that allows us in a far better way in it to get community input and more real-time feedback and open discussions here. And you know, I just, I would like to see us. I mean, we were complaining about uh trimming, trimming uh costs in some of our other areas of town, and, and we're just like not blinking when we look at fifty grand that we're having to outlay on, on this, which we could handle much more cost-effectively. So I'm, you know, I, I appreciate your work on it, but I'm fundamentally opposed to it, and I will be voting no.
Uh, Sally, any uh final rebuttal remarks before we go to a motion?
I would just remind uh the council that this is a one-time expense every day. So in essence, this is a five thousand dollar expense for the next ten years. And uh this is your business plan for the community. Most of you are business people and you, your banks and investors require a plan as a business. And the city itself needs a business plan. And that will attract investors to our community. Uh, if they see that a community is being wise about their transportation, which we just had a big discussion about, about our water, limited water supply and our growth. We are two-thirds built out in this community. The last third of our growth is going to be very critical, as well as what happens when we stop growing because we no longer have the water. And the state requires us to have a parks and recreation section in our master plan. The state chat uh statutes say that the planning commission's role is to create a master plan for community. And eighty-three percent of the action items, over three hundred action items ten years ago have been either accomplished fully or partially accomplished. It is time to go back to our citizens, ask them what they would like to see in this community in the future. And we need to do our planning with a collaborative approach. And ca, this is council's opportunity to reach out to your citizens and find out exactly what their priorities are so that you can create a roadmap for the future. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, and just uh, this is an additional comment. So I, I appreciate uh the question from Councilmember Zuluaga uh about banging the table. Yes, that's correct that we are using CBRF funds to purchase that software. Um, and the, the idea being, of course, to better engage with the community on all matter of things. Uh, Logan Simpson is quite versed in use of Logan Simpson is quite versed in use of bang the table. They have done it for several other organizations. And so I would say we will be getting good use of that CBRF money through bang the table in conjunction with the comp plan. So I appreciate you pointing that out and we'll we'll get to share more about that in the coming weeks, but wanted to offer that as well.
Thank you. Cost member Case, you had some more comments.
I just wanted to remind the council that the grant from the state for fifty thousand dollars is for the code review for our regulations.
Thank you. My final comment will be that the community engagement piece was the problem I had for the last year. And with COVID, it still is a concern for me. My intention is always to get the most community involvement because that's who we represent. We don't represent Valcar or any other particular council person. And so I'm thrilled that we have a method that we can do even under these horrid COVID circumstances where we're all pigeonholed in here. And I'm looking forward to it. I've studied the bang the table a little bit. And I'm optimistic about it and we'll we will see, but that was the piece that was holding me back principally. There's a lot of demographic data that we could have done, probably could have got a high school kid to do, but overall, I think the community engagement piece. We've got an opportunity here that satisfies me to the extent that we're able to work with this particular environment. With that said, I will entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve the comprehensive plan as presented this evening.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Mr. Neal, another second.
I was gonna say, I've got a lot of seconds.
Labar? Yes. Neil?
Yes.
Half?
Sorry, I was muted. No.
Zuluaga?
No.
Alfieri?
No.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries four, three.
Thank you so much, council.
Thank you, Sally. And Michael.
Moving on to item number eight, public hearings, the first of which is approve ordinance number eighteen or thirteen eighty six, series twenty twenty, appropriating sums, blah, 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 for the general fund, finance director has plus. Can you Emily, I'm sorry, could you go forward? I always blow your name, so I apologize.
Oh, it's all right. It's a long one. Thank you and good evening. So in front of you is the twenty twenty one budget ordinances and
May I interrupt? Mayor Carr, maybe I blinked. We went from item seven A. What about seven A? Posting, I think we skipped one, Mayor Carr. Ordinance thirteen eighty nine.
You're you're absolutely correct. I have my sheets out of order here. That's why I blew it. I apologize.
We'll start again.
I had all my sheets out of order. Yes, now that we're on seven A. Which would be from Director Sally Riley, if you would please introduce.
Thank you, Mayor Carr. This is ordinance thirteen eighty nine. It's the first reading to amend section two point four four point zero two zero B, which is to amend the historical preservation committee's bylaws as well as the municipal code section, which deals with the appointment and terms of office. Currently, the terms of office for the historic preservation committee are two years. And as a result of the recent charter amendment, though the all of our committees now have term limits of no more than two terms or a maximum of eight years. So this is to propose to change the historic preservation committee's terms to four years. And the reason for that is that this committee requires professional expertise in a historic preservation due to our certified local government status. So currently, two of the members, both Larry Black and David Langley fulfill the professional services requirement. This is also required to have training on an annual basis. So it's important to retain these volunteers for a longer period of time. So I would recommend approving ordinance thirteen eighty nine on initial posting and set the public hearing for January twenty first. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I apologize to council for blowing the order here. Council, any questions or discussion? Cost member Pat.
Yeah, I want to note that there was something on the changes that frankly didn't make sense as laid out. Under article two, membership. Section two, the very last sentence. Will be two terms limit that a member may serve on the committee. I would recommend that we change that language to say that any elected member may serve no more than two terms.
Mr. Pat, could you give us, what page is that out of the one hundred and five? Can you just?
Eighty two.
Eight, thank you.
And Mr. Path, and could we say any appointed member? They're not elected. They're
Any any member any member of the committee may serve no more than two terms would be much clearer than what's there now. If we did it based on this, it would be highly confusing.
Thank you. Good catch. Other council member Alfieri.
Thank you. Question with the historic preservation committee. Is there any meeting minutes that might go along with this that they had, you know, finalized these changes within their committee before it came to us that might be included with this?
Sure, during the public hearing, we will provide minutes from the January fourth historic preservation committee. We needed to get this on first reading before HPC met, but they will meet on January to review this and make a recommendation.
I see. Thank you.
And and once again, I will mention that this language in the initial posting will change from January seventh to January twenty one. For the public hearing. Any other comments or discussion, council? Seeing none. We will open it up for public comments. I don't see anybody, nobody signed up. There's no hands raised. I will close the public comment section. And I will recognize any final discussion or questions or deliberation from the council, please. If any. Mayor Protam Labar, I'll just go around the table.
I don't have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Cost member Alfieri.
Nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Cost member Case.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Cost member Neil.
Nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Cost member Path.
I've had my say so far. No, nothing else.
Thanks for the catch. Council members Zuluaga.
Yeah, notwithstanding what councilman Path has found, I'm fine with it.
Thank you. I will encourage motion at this point.
And your honor, if I if I could add whoever's making the motion, I believe it's consensus, but if you could specify for the record on first passing that it would include the amendments that council member Path has pointed out.
I will make the motion to approve initial posting to ordinance thirteen eighty nine, series twenty twenty on first reading, including the amendment as stated. And also to set the public hearing for January twenty first.
I second the motion.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Neil?
Yes.
Half?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
Yes.
Alfieri?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Labar? Labar?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Now, I think we're in order finally. Director Kat Simpolis, tell me how you pronounce your name because I keep doing this wrong.
Kat Simpolis, but Kat Simpolis is right as well. It's probably more accurate to Greek. So, yes, good evening and thank you again. So in front of you in your packet is the twenty twenty one budget resolutions, the first being the general fund. And they were approved on initial posting at the last meeting on December third. So nothing has changed since then. Please let me know if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, council. We will open for discussion. As she said, nothing's changed. There was some elected officials fine tuning and breaking out of expenditures and things per council's request, but none of the totals have changed. But mine, as as we all know, this these budgets are dynamic and they fluctuate. Every time somebody sells a house or whatever, we have different numbers. So I'll ask council any any further questions. Cost member Case.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a phone call this evening before the meeting that I said to the caller that I would share a request of the council. She called me on behalf of several citizens which she did not identify and asked the council to consider time for the citizens to consider the changes and have the opportunity to mention and talk about things. I believe that Michael Lawson also sent us an email from the same individual this evening and shared the same sentiments to ask us to consider the ordinance at the next meeting and that the charter provision allowing for operations in twenty twenty budget to move forward until we pass the ordinance. And she also expressed some concerns of conflicts of interest, which were not specifically identified, associated with the budget. And Mr. Carr, she asked me to tell you that she is back. That's all I have. Thank you.
Oh, well, I know who that is, so thank you.
I just, I I told her that I would honor her wish and share that with the council before we go through the process. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I saw council member Zuluaga raised his hand.
Well, Rusty, do you want to go first? Because you're you were yours is up whenever I raise mine.
Recognized you, so you go.
All right, very good. So Mayor Carr, for the benefit of the public, could you seeing nothing else has changed except councils line item, could you please read those so that folks can see what they are? So at least that that is not.
Budget, I'm I'm not sure we want to read the whole thing, but there's
No, 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 just just that one part about the just the dollars for for
Operating expenditures miscellaneous, there's now it's broken out into all kinds of categories, including training and travel, supplies, meetings, mileage and meals and special projects.
And so the just for clarification, the total number of that budget item, I mean, the budget category, not the category, it's just the total.
Yeah, it hasn't changed. It's the same twenty two, five. Emily, I worked that out right after the last meeting.
Thank you.
Member Neil, you had your hand up.
Thank you. Yeah, I received a telephone call from the same person and and she said I could use her name. That the email was wrong. It's Maria Sennell that had requested the statement that Kelly read. I also received a phone call, so it had been dutifully fulfilled by the request. Or the requested but dutifully fulfilled. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments at this time? Seeing none.
Just just one more, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Oh, council members Zuluaga.
Just in in comment to Ms. Sennell's comment, one of the considerations that that I'm looking at on this is that to approve this budget this year before December thirty first allows this budget to to move forward. If I understand it correctly, if we don't approve the budget this year, then we go into a default mode. Could you clarify that, either Emily or Jason?
And so I don't know exactly all of the dollar figures, but I can say you're correct. The way the charter reads is that it would basically, we would revert to the twenty twenty budget moving forward for operational issues only, no capital expenditures in the general fund and other things would be budgeted, so we wouldn't be able to do any larger projects. And we would need to maintain our twenty twenty level fundings. So that could mean a couple of different things. Some of the transition from the twenty twenty budget to the twenty twenty one proposed budget included some additional increases that we don't have control over. We do our best with healthcare, et cetera. Those would then be problematic because they wouldn't be in harmony with what the twenty twenty budget allowed. Other projects which council and staff have worked to trim in some areas would be can have more money allocated to them based off of the twenty twenty budget versus the twenty twenty one budget. And so those are some of the impacts. I don't know the exact dollar figures. If we could certainly get far into the weeds if you'd like to on that, but that's the general premise.
Yeah, thank you. I I will state that the staff has done tremendous work. I'll get to Kelly in a second. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I I will say the staff did tremendous work, including our just departed city manager and the finance department. And I'm I'm pretty thrilled with the work they've done and I I I do worry about the jeopardy on on certain capital projects because we already talked about that in a previous item, that that jeopardy is is real. And I I would be concerned if we went that way, but we certainly that certainly is in the charter. It's it's well stated. And our our city attorney stated it well that the impacts are not always understood. We've done quite a bit of analysis despite some rumblings out in the hinterlands that we didn't, but the there was a lot of very careful analysis work done. And I I I want to congratulate the city staff on doing all that. Cost member Case, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things. Number one, I just want to say that the charter provision for the twenty twenty operating budget moving forward into twenty twenty one would only be in place until this council passes the twenty twenty one budget. So any shortfalls or anything associated with benefits or anything like that would be short lived. If we were to consider this request of the citizen, just for clarification, because it would only be until our next meeting or maybe the next meeting. So it would only maybe be thirty days that we would be living under those conditions until the council would pass the budget. My second point is that I just want to make a statement before our vote that I I too am appreciative of the staff. I'm very appreciative of this council and we have spent four months plus with work sessions and meetings, working through line by line, page by page of this budget. And last minute on first reading of the budget ordinance, almost And last minute, on first reading of the budget ordinance, almost a lot of that went out the window, and a raft of changes were made. And number one, I don't appreciate that. We spent a great deal of time as a group, came to a consensus, and last minute, there were changes. Therefore, with that, a lot of those I don't agree with, and I will be voting no on this budget item and the next. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Neil?
This is for clarification, because I did actually receive the telephone call from Ms. Sennell. Robert, the intention was not necessarily to postpone it until January. In fact, she had mentioned having a special meeting, so she was not suggesting that we had to wait all the way until January, just for clarification purposes.
Thank you. Councilmember Zulawaga?
Mr. Mayor, before our vote this evening, is there a time where Ms. Sennell can express under public comment any concerns that she is wanting to voice before this goes for a vote?
We have had it voiced, and we have a procedure in place, and that procedure has been set up in advance. And so her comments have been stated. I don't know, twice, as a matter of fact.
And to your point, Councilmember Zulawaga, we do have public comment as a part of the public hearing process that we'll be having here shortly.
Very good. Thanks a lot.
Yeah, it's standard public hearing process. We're not quite there yet. Counsel, seeing no other hands raised on counsel, I would open public hearing. So public comment, and we have two people who've signed up. The first is Ms. Stinner, and on budget item eight, if she can be promoted, Rob, I'd appreciate it. I don't see, there she is. Thank you. Ms. Stinner, if you could identify yourself, your location, and you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Carr. My name is Patricia Stinner. I am a citizen and resident of the city of Woodland Park. The concern I have about moving forward with approving this budget is that I I have heard from a couple during the meetings, the council meetings, at least a couple of councilmen have the same concern that I share. There was a reduction, there was a vote for a reduction in mill levy, and there was not a fiscal impact study provided to the public. Perhaps it was provided to some of the council members or to the entire council. But I'm concerned where those cuts are going to be made, and I don't think that there's transparency in the in the grand plan for this mill levy reduction. It's puzzling to me. So that's my comment, and and I thank council for all the hard work that they've done coming up with the budget, and I agree with Councilman Case. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the roster is Mr. Butterey, and let's see if I can spot him. I do not see him on the register here. All right. Any other people could raise their hand? I don't see any other raised hands. I will move that public comment be closed. And I would say that one comment is the staff did a tremendous amount of analysis, including the former city manager, on exactly the impact. There is zero impact with the mill levy rate. That's not on the agenda tonight, and it's a settled issue, but there was extraordinary analysis done for the sixty-three thousand dollars by staff and the combination with the council's desires. And so we're past public comment. Any other final questions? Emily, do you have any other comments you want to make before we go to counsel?
I do not. Thank you. No, you're fine. Emily's good. Thank you, though.
All right, counsel, final thoughts. Mayor Protem Labar, please.
Yeah, I'm just curious, with the analysis that was done for the sixty-some thousand, I never received any feedback or information about that.
Well, they found the money, basically, is what happened.
I didn't receive anything either.
Well, where was it, and what did they, where is it coming from?
If I may answer that, that part of that was discussed in the last meeting with the reduction for Main Street, the reduction for the visitor services contract, and the reduction for the elected officials budget.
Thank you.
And the revenue, and the revenue projection.
Just to make a point, those are one-time savings for a permanent, ongoing reduction. Thank you.
Right, and then the other part was the two-point-two-five percent sales tax escalation factor.
All right, any further comments from counsel? Seeing none, we'll close the evidentiary portion, and I would encourage a motion from counsel.
Mr. Mayor, we're working off of ordinance thirteen eighty-six, correct?
Thirteen eighty-six, correct.
Eighteen eighty-six, series twenty twenty, an ordinance appropriating sums of money to the various funds in the amounts and for the purpose of set forth below for the city of Woodland Park, Colorado, for the twenty twenty-one budget year for general fund.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Alfieri. Suzanne?
Half?
Yes.
Dillawaga?
Yes.
Alfieri?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
No.
Labar?
No.
Neil?
No.
Thank you. Motion carries four-three.
Thank you. We will go now to eight B, which is to approve ordinance thirteen eighty-seven, series twenty twenty. Presenter, Finance Director Kat Simpolis.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. That's good. So also included in your packet is ordinance thirteen eighty-seven, which is all of the funds except for the general fund, which was just passed. Have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Nothing at all has changed in this from its initial posting, but I would welcome any comments or questions from counsel at this point, please. Seeing none, I will go to public comment. Seeing none, I will, well, I will give Ms. Stinner another opportunity in case she wanted to comment on this part of the situation.
They have to be promoted back in.
I know, I'm trying to do that. There we go. Ms. Stinner, any further comments than your first on this particular thirteen eighty-seven?
Mayor Carr, thank you so much for offering me the opportunity.
You have five minutes.
Mayor Carr, can you hear me?
I can.
Mayor Carr, thank you for offering me the opportunity to make another statement, but I will pass. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. The only other sign up we have is Mr. Butterey. I don't see him on here once again. And seeing no other hands raised, I will close public comment. I think there's probably no rebuttal from our finance director since we haven't made any comments. So I will offer each councilperson in rotation to have final comments on this. Councilmember, I mean, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Labar?
No comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Alfieri?
No comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Case?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be voting no for this evening because I will not support. Number one, we asked for some detail for legal expenses in the Downtown Development Authority Fund. Never received that to this day. I will not support any more spending without a viable project on the table presented to the council and approved by the council to appropriate funds to support such a project, and I will not support any more wasteful spending in that fund without something being dedicated to early reduction of debt, which has been the theme of this council's work sessions this year, and there's nothing there in that budget for any reduction of debt or planning for reduction of debt. I will be voting no, and this has nothing to do with any of the other funds, but they're all together, so that's my position. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Neil?
Nothing further.
Thank you. Councilmember Pfaff?
Yeah, Councilmember Case says there's nothing set for reduction of debt. There is in this budget, just not to her liking, apparently. So that has been covered and addressed in this budget, and we have put together a responsible budget that will continue us down a path that will help us to maintain city services that are fundamentally necessary and give us an opportunity to rethink our direction for the future. So I'm a strong yes for this budget and this portion of it that we're about to vote upon.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to clarify. I was talking about the early reduction of debt in the DDA fund. I didn't mean to insinuate that there wasn't any reduction of debt because we've done a fabulous job planning in the general fund. Thank you, just to clarify. I appreciate the opportunity.
Well, I apologize, Councilmember Case. She didn't clarify that that was the DDA debt fund, but I think she may have been referring to that.
Yeah, that was my interpretation, so I think we're all good. We're all on the same page. Thank you. Councilmember Zulawaga?
Yeah, I have only one comment, and that is to respond to one of our citizens who wrote in concern that his street wasn't, the snow wasn't taken off it in the same time he was used to. And although I can't weigh in on the whys and wherefores of that, I do want to say that this budget has not reduced those services to the citizens so that it is just so that he knows that it's not the intention of this council to not have the streets cared for in the way that we're accustomed to.
Thank you. That would be a twenty twenty budget situation anyway, and as you said, we have not reduced any services or in this next budget. Councilman, so I'm up. So I would state that a lot of these issues that we probably should bring up in council reports, but I appreciate all your comments, counsel. I would welcome a motion at this point.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve ordinance number thirteen eighty-seven, series twenty twenty, and ordinance appropriating sums of money to the various funds in the amounts and for the purpose as set forth below for the city of Woodland Park, Colorado, for the twenty twenty budget year for all funds except the general fund.
I will correct your twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, will you modify your motion?
No, I meant twenty twenty-one. Sorry.
I will second it with that amendment.
Are we, Suzanne, are we clear on, would you like, I would like you to read the motion, please?
Councilmember Pfaff made the motion to approve ordinance number thirteen eighty-seven, series twenty twenty, and ordinance appropriating sums of money to the various funds in the amounts and for the purpose as set forth below for the city of Woodland Park, Colorado, for the twenty twenty-one budget year for all funds except the general fund. Seconded by Councilmember Zulawaga.
Thank you very much. Suzanne?
Dillawaga?
Yes.
Alfieri?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
No.
Labar?
No.
Neil?
No.
Half?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries four-three.
Thank you. We move on to reports. I wanted to mention to everybody who's transitioned in this last week, and I've had several conversations with the new acting city manager, and we've got some big things that he's working on, and I look forward to having a great relationship there, and I think we're going to have some work sessions that are going to be very interesting and proceed along a path that actually Suzanne and I talked about three years ago. But some events that we're having coming up for Christmas are sleigh rides at the M. Lazy Sea Ranch, now through January seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, by reservation only. Call or see their website for more information. They also have a Facebook presence that I've seen. Caris Bible College Live, which is a drive-by nativity from December eighteenth through December twentieth. See the Caris website for more information. Also, we have a chamber lunch and learn on January seventh at eleven-thirty a.m. It's suicide prevention amid COVID-nineteen crisis. As we all know, we have heard anecdotally, if nothing else, that's a huge issue with COVID, and I'm hopeful that these vaccines help us, and we all be careful with our prevention. I want to say have a blessed Merry Christmas and a holiday season. Stay well and be safe, and I'll see you next year in twenty twenty-one or around town, and Happy New Year from the mayor. Mayor Protem Labar?
Can I skip my turn for a minute? There was something I wanted to announce, but I can't remember if I knew what it was.
Yeah, I know the feeling. I feel I missed something too, but absolutely. Councilmember Alfieri?
I want to double check the council member Case first. I don't want to speak ahead of her with holiday home tours, so I'm just double checking to see if she'd like to report on it.
You don't.
I got it. So we did have the holiday home tour two weekends ago, December fifth and sixth, although it didn't look like it normally does in years prior. We still had a good turnout based on the situation that we're in. We don't have final numbers, but I believe we still had about two to three hundred attendees come out for that event. It was a great weekend, which we always hope for. So it's exciting. We were really happy to still be able to provide that event to the community this year despite everything, and still be able to put on an event that raised money for our local nonprofits. And with that, I would just say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone. We'll see you next year.
Thank you. Councilmember Case?
Thank you, Stephanie. Yeah, I think we sold right around two-hundred-and-sixty tickets or something. It was great. Everybody was very careful, and so far, so good. Nothing reported as far as any potential outbreaks. So I think everybody minded their manners, and it went off well. And congratulations to everyone and all the beneficiaries of that tour this year. And I just would like to thank the council for all their hard work this year in preparing the budget. It was always, it's always a long process and sometimes can be quite painful, but it's very important, and thank you all for everything you've done, and to the staff particularly. I know what that takes to put that document together, and it's quite daunting. I know what that takes to put that document together, and it's quite daunting. So thank you to everyone. I'd like to also welcome Michael, and so far I am highly impressed, and thank you for your innovation and your brilliant ideas to help us do a better job in all respects. I look forward to working with you and see great things down the road for you and for us as well. And to everyone in the community and all the staff and the city council, I wish you a very merry and safe Christmas and the happiest of New Years, and May twenty twenty-one look a little more normal for us all. Thank you.
Thank you. I second that absolutely. Councilmember Neal.
I have no reports to report on, but I do want to wish all the citizens, the city staff, and the council a very happy holiday season. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I have a go back? I forgot one really important thing.
So did I. So you go first.
I and does yours have to do with Norm?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay, well, I just wanted to acknowledge the award, and I forgive me, I don't remember the name of the award. But Normstein was honored by PPACG this last week. I know you were there, Mr. Mayor, for his service, and if you could help me, Mr. Mayor, you may remember better that because I was not there, but I just wanted to recognize and thank Norman Stein for and the other Commissioner Mark Dettenreiter for their service. Because I believe that they are finished, if not close to finished, with their terms, and thank you for their service. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for letting me go back.
Yeah, I appreciate that. It was a community service award. It's first first edition, and it's well deserved. It's he's done a tremendous job throughout. It's going to be a hard act to follow for any commissioner. They're going to have to divide up all these jobs and do all the things they're going to do, and it was well deserved. But it's a PPACG Community Service Award, and you are correct. I forgot about that. I had a different thing, but thank you for bringing that up.
It also honored our prior mayor, Ms. Neil Levy, as well in his name. So just that final point, and I promise I'll shut up.
Yeah, the spirit of the award is was laid out in in the PPACG presentation, and you're absolutely correct. Our fine former mayor Neil Levy's attitude and service to the community was is inspired the award. Councilmember Paff, I believe you're next.
Yes, Councilmember Zuluaga referred to it earlier. I think it was Councilmember Zuluaga. But anyway, I wanted to read a portion of the letter that we receive in council from our one of our citizens, Jason Baker. The portion he wrote was historically that or that I want to share is having lived for fifteen years in his street, he says, historically, the city has always done an outstanding job of keeping our street plowed even on the weekends. Typically, by seven a.m., our whole street has been plowed at least once, and crews do a good job of keeping up with the snow as it falls throughout the day. Recently, there's been a lot of talk about cutting city services to reduce the budget. I'm writing to ask you to please reconsider. I love living in Woodland Park and think the city does an amazing job of serving the community, not only the snow plowing and streets department, but also staff in City Hall from the Planning Department, the Utility Department, as well as our Police Department. Every time I have needed assistance or have concern or have a concern, the staff's level of customer service is really extraordinary. As to the staff service, there's no doubt that it is fantastic and always done well, and we have a lot to be thankful for in this community because of that. You know, having been one of the newer people in the community, I can tell you that the staff has always treats people well every time I talk to folks, and my interactions are there as well, and I thank every one of you. But as to the concern about cutting city services to that there are people making this statement in the community, and my response to that and my assurance to Mr. Baker as well is that anyone who's giving you that impression to quote the movie Elf is sitting on a throne of lies. And so I want to let you know that this council is committed to maintaining the basic liberty services that make this a wonderful city to live in and that has given you, Mr. Baker, so much comfort and assurance through the years. I do want to wish everyone in the city a Merry Christmas, and it's a beautiful time. Hopefully, we'll maintain some of the snow without having to receive too much more and mess up the traffic. And as I go into my second year of living in this city, I just want to thank some of the people who have made me feel very, very welcome while I've been here. I think of people like former city manager David Buttery, Carol Harvey, council members Kelly Case, Mayor Protem Labar, Rusty Neal, Councilmember Alfieri, and Councilmember Zuluaga. It makes me feel special to know how well received I am and how much what I bring to this city has meant to them, and it's very useful because we definitely want people to enjoy our city. We want people to move to our city and be able to enjoy it and participate in everything we have to offer here. This is an excellent city. I always dreamed of being able to live up here when I lived in Colorado Springs for many, many years, and that dream was finally fulfilled. And I feel so warmly welcomed by everyone here. So thank you and have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Councilmember Zuluaga.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, let's start with my liaison reports. Main Street, Main Street met this week, and I saw some really, really positive things going through the just the just the big changes Main Street's been through this year in terms of the internal upheaval and but they have a couple of things that they're working on that I think are very exciting. One is QuickBooks. They're looking at getting their books into systematic order. So that's one. They're looking at getting funding approaching some organizations like Newmont Mine and Walmart for getting grants from these organizations. So that's a way of addressing the funding issue that has been so just so much discussed. I guess I'll have to be the the they were disappointed that council wasn't at the at the shop small Saturday, and I can only make a personal apology that there's so much going on. Keeping up with all the pieces is is a challenge. But they but they just wanted to know they hope for greater engagement from us all in the new year. As far as the DDA goes, the DDA is in negotiations, as you know, and there's no further development on that. However, I do believe that the the gentleman who we're working with is actually coming to town here, in fact, could be here this week. So there'll be some progress on that, I believe, by the next time we meet for council. And I wanted to take a moment to thank our two outgoing Teller County Commissioners, Mark Dettenreiter and Normstein. It has been tough, and also for Bob, it has been a tough, tough year for them to make the decisions that have affected Woodland Park in terms of working with the the governor and his what I would contend is his legal overreach that has really impacted our community. They have done very well to hold the hold the line, work as hard as they can to get variances with the governor. It's by God's grace and their hard work that that Cripple Creek and the casinos are still open and functioning. There's a real tug of war going on right now about whether they're going to move us to a different color. Feel like we're part of his rainbow. But in any case, I just want to thank the the two of them, the three of them, but the two are outgoing particularly to say that we appreciate the fact that you've taken the the heat. Our city council and our city government has been behind their work, and it's tough for all of us to see so many rights of ours infringed on in the interest of public health, but I want to thank them for their efforts. Secondly, I look forward to a new year of getting to know our city staff. COVID has made it really hard for us to interact, and I would say that with our new acting city manager, I think we have a far far better doors are look to be open so that we can actually get to know one another. Perceptionally, I had a very difficult time. There was a lot of tension about whether we could even talk to staff. So anyway, so I'm very much looking forward to the new year to getting to actually get a social interaction with you all. So I'm hoping that happens. And 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 I guess my last my last comment is I also want to thank Caris Bible College for what they've done in our community through this whole COVID pandemic. Whether our community knew it or not, a lot of the county activities of crisis management were were hosted at their facilities and with all their excellent AV equipment and everything else that enabled those events to happen and and the contribution that they are to our community through it all. It's tough on the large organizations to to weather the sort of restrictions that we're under. So it's the reason for the season is Jesus Christ, and so I wish you all thanks to Donald Trump, a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Labar, do-over.
I couldn't find what I wanted to announce, and then I watched Councilmember Paff wander off into the dark, and I thought maybe he was getting lost, and we need to send a search party, and my mind completely wandered, and then he made it back to the light, and we were okay. I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, happy holidays. Thank you to everyone on council, to the city staff. I know that we are tumultuous sometimes, but I always appreciate a good argument. I appreciate reasoned logic, and I appreciate every one of you serving this community. So thank you very much.
Yes, and thank you for your service. I did remember I I'm going to do my do-over. I participated with the tree lighting and the Santa issues or celebration. I can't remember when it was, but it was recently, and it was a wonderful thing, and I've talked with Parks and Rec, with the city, with the staff, with Michael, with a bunch of people about us doing more regular things like that. It was tremendous for the community. Got everybody out, that including the Halloween effort put on by Parks and Rec and the city staff as a whole. I I think it was probably the best things we did in twenty twenty, and I look forward to maybe trying to figure out how to do things like that. Every month would be great. Every other month would be perfect, but not just at this time of year. I I think it was so such a great thing for some of us on council and the staff and the community thanked thanked all of us profusely. And I I just can't say enough about how how great Cindy and all her people did on that effort. It was tremendous. With that, I will turn it over to the city attorney's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I I wanted to echo a lot of the comments that have been said as wishing everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Holidays for whatever it is you celebrate or whether you celebrate just as as family. And appreciate the the sentiment from everyone before me. And I did also wanted to consider something for the council to consider as we move forward into twenty twenty-one and hope the hopeful return to being normal again, and as we come have these meetings in person. Something to consider is you've had such wonderful backdrops in your pictures here, and and maybe we can get some printouts for the the dais so that we can have some variety for people to look at at the in-person meetings to you know, the Constitution behind you or the Aurora Borealis or a fireplace, etc. We'll look into that as an idea. Keep the meetings fun and interesting. I don't have anything further to add. I do wish everybody the the best of rest of the year and a very wonderful new year.
Thank you. I was I was thinking I was doing well until I saw Hillary's background. I said, oh, wow, that's great. How do I do that? But anyway, I echo your sentiments. I know Robin Brown would like to speak about snow plowing, and maybe she could do that when we come to the city manager's report, which is now.
All right. First, I I appreciate Jason's suggestion. We'll make sure that the humongous screen behind the dais comes out of his budget. So that's that's a great suggestion. So I love it. I I will go ahead and defer to Robin, and she can address the snow plowing issue first, and then I'll continue.
Thank you, Michael, and thank you, council. I I just wanted to apologize sincerely to council and to our community. The the lack of snow plowing over the weekend was was the result of a series of miscommunications, and we are working to resolve those. So I wanted to apologize to everybody and let you know that we will try not to let that happen again in the future. Related to that, we're our streets crew is down to three people, and they have about a hundred and twenty miles of road to plow. So when you see them out, just realize that they've probably been out for hours, and they've been working really hard. So thank you all, and I hope you have a very Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Hanukkah, all of that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Robin. And then I will turn it over to Emily Kit-Simples to talk about the sales tax report for October.
Thank you, Michael. So included in your packet as well is the sales tax report for sales in October received by the city in November. And you will see month-to-date three percent increase. And year-to-date, we're at a seven point four percent increase or four point two percent over budget. And then lodging tax, we had some issues with the reporting on that, and I apologize for that. It's been corrected now, and we are up actually fifteen percent over twenty nineteen year-to-date. So please let me know if you have any questions, and if not, happy holidays and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Michael.
Now, a few items of my own. Wanted to share with folks a brief Coronavirus Relief Fund update. So we we are just about at the end of our time being able to utilize that money. To date, we've spent six hundred and six thousand dollars with a few more pending charges. I believe our total that we were allotted was six hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. Just some highlights from from that spending. We've sent out four hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars in the form of disbursements. Three hundred and seventy-seven thousand of that went to thirty-two different businesses. We have four more applications pending for that that category of businesses. Seven nonprofits received a total of a little over sixty-six thousand dollars. And then individual residents completed twenty applications, receiving ten thousand dollars each with thirteen pending applications as well. So altogether, as I mentioned, we've we've sent out four hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, have about another forty-one thousand dollars pending, which would bring it to about just shy of five hundred thousand dollars of that money went right back out into the community. So I appreciate the efforts of our staff and Brady Myers in particular for helping get that money out the door. So and the rest of that money went to is going to PPE for our residents, excuse me, our employees, some teleworking equipment to keep our employees safe and socially distanced, and a handful of other small things. So we we are wrapping that up. We have a few more projects, and we'll probably do one more report out to you on how that went. And I I wanted to thank the community for embracing our new public invited-to-be-heard tool. Rob Feltz and Grace Johnson and our our team put that together yesterday, did a fantastic job. So I'd encourage folks, especially as long as we are in this virtual format on Zoom. If you are interested in being heard on an agenda item or a non-agenda item, go to the city's website. You can find it a number of different places. Fill out one of those forms. It's very minimal information. It should go real quick. That would certainly help us keep order here and certainly make your lives easier too. So please do look for that, and thanks to our team for for using that. Uh, and thanks to our team for, for using that. And just maybe on a lighter note, I, I would like to thank the, the council and especially our staff for just doing. A, a great job in what's been a very challenging year. Um, I, I've been here all of two months, but uh, I, I truly appreciate the, the amount of work our staff has done, the passion. Uh, they've exhibited in some really tough times. And I, we, we, we are, I think just about all of us are looking forward to twenty twenty going away. Um, but just, just one more word of thanks to our staff. Uh, we, we are truly blessed in this organization to have them. And, and thank you for the council for your support. We, we really appreciate it. Um, and finally, uh, thank you for all the kind words of the Steve meeting. I appreciate, uh, appreciate that. Uh, that's very high expectations, so. Um, I, it's, it's appreciated, but we'll, we'll, we'll work our, our hardest to live up to it. Um, I, I look forward to working with the, the council and with the staff and with the community. Uh, in, in next year and beyond that. Um, we're, we're looking forward to having some, some new conversations with the community in a few different methods, uh, as was mentioned earlier. Um, we will be looking at a couple of different ways, several different ways. Um, to try and get to the, the broadest swath of the community uh, heard and involved as, as we can, so. I look forward to that. Thank you for your trust in me, uh, selecting me as the acting. And uh, we, we look forward to serving all of you on, on council and the residents as well, so. Uh, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year, uh, and the rest. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Alfieri, uh, you have some final words, I think.
Thank you. Yes, I'm sorry. I wanted to comment on the uh, sales tax report. Um, so sorry, I didn't jump in there quite quick enough. I know we kind of skimmed over it, but I did want to take a minute to really um, shed some light on that. Uh, regarding the numbers, I wanted to point out that it is uh, should be very comforting. And uh, does look really positive as Miss Kat Simples had touched on. Our sales tax revenue is up uh, year over year, seven point four percent. In uh, dollars, that actually equates to just over three hundred and ninety seven thousand dollars above last year. Uh, lodging tax revenue being up fifteen percent that equates to just over twenty six thousand dollars year over year. So I wanted to point that out. Um. It should be a comfort to show that the city is doing quite well despite everything we've been through. We're still seeing increase of revenue in those areas. Even while many of our businesses, uh, most of which have, almost all of which have been closed temporarily at times and some now permanently. The city itself um, is still seeing an increase in revenue. Um, and hopefully that is a level of comfort uh, to our citizens and our community. Um, that our revenues, at least in these areas mostly to, well, sales tax revenue being the biggest area of revenue. Um, is solid despite everything we've been through and everything that is happening to our businesses and neighbors and community around the city.
Thank you. Uh, so final word from me is that I went in today and uh, destroyed my mailbox unfortunately, so somebody's going to have to repair that. Down in our box, mailbox room. You all have a ton of stuff in your mailboxes, but you also have a bunch of packages and gifts from the staff. Up in Darren's office, Darren's old's office. I would welcome all of you to get up there and get all those goodies. Bring a big old box or a couple of. Sacks or something because there is quite a few things there. Their staff was very generous, but you've got mail and you've got presents there. Uh, that's a final reminder to, uh, for all of you to go in there and I hope somebody can fix my mailbox at some point, but I apologize. Um, final word, we're done. Uh, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Happy New Year.